Okay, we'll call it to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Stewart. I'm the Mayor of Coquitlam. On behalf of the City of Coquitlam and council, we want to thank you all for coming out tonight. This is a public hearing into the bylaws that will be read to you in a moment by the deputy city clerk. So council has already given first reading to these bylaws and directed that a public hearing should be held to get the opinions of the public. Staff from the city's planning and development department will present a summary of each proposed bylaw, and then the floor will be open to anyone in the room that has an opinion to share with us. Those who have pre-registered will be given the first opportunity to speak, and then we'll open the floor. We stressed to you all that this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaws to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input, but council has already, has also instructed me that there are rules that they wish to abide, wish the public hearing to abide by. It is not a question-and-answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws with either council members, with staff, or with those in the audience who might have a different point of view. And so we ask you, please, to restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw that you're speaking about, to be as brief and concise as possible. And how we do that, we have a five-minute time limit. We ask you to please abide by that. If you have more than five minutes of good stuff, please get to the back of the line and you can, you can speak as often as you like in order to make sure that everything you have to convey to us gets spoken, but it also gives an opportunity for everyone in the room to offer their opinion. We ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interruption, and that's no clapping and no booing and no tearing. We believe in non-bullying and we work very hard to make sure that everyone is comfortable, even those who've never spoken at a microphone before. We recognize that this process can be intimidating. As Chair of this hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that doesn't relate to the bylaw, that becomes abusive, or becomes repetitive of views that that speaker has already made known to council members. Now, if you have a paper version of your presentation, or you have any data, or you have something that you want to be part of the public record on this item, on these items, please make sure you hand that piece of paper into the deputy city clerk prior to the conclusion of that item. After an item is concluded in the public hearing, council can receive no further information about it, even if we don't vote on it tonight, even if we vote on it weeks from now, we still can't receive any further information than what we've asked for tonight or than what we've received from the public hearing. Immediately following adjournment of the public hearing, regularly scheduled council meeting is, will convene in order that council may give consideration to items on the public hearing agenda if council wishes. However, if during the public hearing council requests further information that isn't available yet related to an item, or for some other reason doesn't wish to consider the item tonight, we can postpone an item for consideration at a subsequent council meeting. I will now call on Ms. Lower to introduce, actually, I will say, we have all council members present except councillor Asmussen. Councillor Asmussen has phoned me today and asked me to make known that he actually is in hospital. He's awaiting a procedure. It's not life-threatening, but he is awaiting a procedure and is unable to make it tonight. He will undoubtedly be following the proceedings on the webcast, although probably not live, I hope. So now I'll call on Ms. Lower to introduce the bylaws on tonight's agenda and planning and development staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Item one is a rezoning application for 1313 Cartier Avenue, or sorry, it's a heritage revitalization agreement with the owner of 1313 Cartier Avenue, bylaw number 43452012.
Good evening, Your Worship, and members of council. My name is Chris Jarvy, development planner for the City of Coquitlam. I'm here tonight to present an application for Heritage Revitalization Agreement, HRA, for the Maison-Ville located at 1313 Cartier Avenue. The subject property is located on the north side of Cartier Avenue in close proximity to Levalle Square, west of KC Street, within the historic Millardville neighbourhood. The Maison-Ville was constructed in approximately 1910 by the Canadian Western Lumber Company. The house, which is currently listed in the city's heritage inventory as a Class A building, is a unique historical representation as it was a purpose-built rental home designed to provide rental housing for workers at the nearby lumber mill. Though the Maison-Ville was a purpose-built rental home, it was eventually sold to Paul Joseph Vile in 1943. Vile arrived in Coquitlam in 1911 as part of the second wave of French-Canadian workers that arrived in Millardville seeking employment. Vile originally rented the home in 1930 and purchased it in 1943. The HRA includes a conservation and maintenance plan for the heritage house established by the applicant's heritage consultant and architect, Eric Patterson, Architecture. The proposal includes restoration of the heritage house and raising the existing structure by 11 inches to dig out the basement and add a new secondary suite in the basement. Two additional two-unit buildings are proposed to be added to the site for a total of five primary units with a secondary suite, which cannot be strata titled or sold for the benefit of the heritage house. Access to parking for the new units is provided via the common driveway located on the east side of the property, as noted up above. Four unenclosed parking spaces and two enclosed parking spaces are provided in this area for the new units, while an additional two spaces provided in tandem format are provided on the western side of the heritage building. The additional units have been designed to be sympathetic in design to the heritage home while respecting these existing setbacks en masseing. Through the review of the home, the heritage consultant has revealed the original colour scheme of the home, and the proposal includes repainting the heritage house in the original colour scheme with complementary colours proposed for the new units. The applicant represented by Eric Patterson, Architecture, will provide additional details on the project. The applicant has already provided a presentation to the Millardville Residents' Association in addition to hosting an open house tour at the Maison-Ville, which was attended by members of council, city staff, neighbours, as well as members of the Coquitlam Heritage Society, as well as the Millardville Residents' Association. Staff are recommending that council give second, third, and fourth and final reading to Heritage Revitalization Agreement, bylaw 43452012. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one registered speaker, Eric Patterson, from 810 Keyside Drive in Westminster, I believe has something to do with the project.
Good evening, Your Worship, and members of council. My name is Eric Patterson of Patterson Architecture. We are architects for the project under consideration. We are here this evening to briefly outline the project and to answer any questions that may arise tonight. As a Heritage Revitalization Agreement, or HRA, the proposal takes into account and balances several key factors as follows: community objectives that support heritage retention and restoration; official community plan objectives for use in density in the Millardville area; site planning issues, including street improvements, effect on neighbours, and existing site conditions such as steep slopes; creating livable homes for new residents; a marketable solution for the project developer; compatible design of infill buildings, and most importantly, minimal intervention and a high restoration standard for the historic Maison-Ville. Site planning highlights, as planning alluded to, include maintaining the heritage house and its short driveway in its current location, situating the new driveway on an existing stormwater easement along the east property line, lowering grade entirely at the rear of the property, and placing one new duplex beside the heritage house and the second at the rear of the site. The resulting project frontage on Cartier creates a streetscape of a natural rhythm of homes and their side yards, as you see in the neighbourhood. The effect of the rear duplex on neighbouring properties is greatly diminished by lowering grade in the rear of the site. Only a master bedroom within the roof form is above the main floor, and windows on that rear face of the building are limited. The site has a high-quality landscaping character with concrete pavers, garden walls, planting beds, wood fences, and lots of trees. The rear area is more of a courtyard than a parking lot. There is a timber gazebo with a water feature and shared mailboxes at the street entry on the sidewalk. The project provides a diversity of housing options from a modest two-bedroom, 900-square-foot secondary suite to a four-bedroom-plus-stand, 1700-square-foot unit. Appropriately, the heritage house will remain as a single strata unit rather than being broken up into several suites. Parking, as always, is a challenge for projects where we are trying to save and design around an historic building. The project provides eight total parking spaces in a layout that does not compromise design character. The heritage values and integrity of the Maison-Ville are very significant on this project. A key heritage value is the social significance of the Ville family. This was a vernacular home of a modest working family that traces its route back to France and who found a friendly home in Millardville. The exterior of the house is in near-original condition and readily restored. Original colours have been discovered and will be reused. Wood windows, the original front door, will also be restored. The existing foundation and basement is substandard and in poor condition, so to create a proper new suite, the house will be lifted onto a new foundation. Likewise, the front porch is deteriorated from settling foundations and exposure to decades of weather, so it will be reconstructed from the box columns down. The new duplexes are finished in compatible contemporary materials. However, in our experience, the key to avoid overpowering historic buildings is in the basic principles of form, scale, and massing that you see in this proposal. We undertook a community consultation process that included museum staff, a meeting with the Residents' Association, ongoing discussions with neighbours, and an open house and tour on-site. Comments received have all been generally favourable. In closing, we trust you will agree that this is a reasonable, that a reasonable balance of community objectives, technical solutions, and conservation standards are well-balanced by the project. Thank you, and I can answer any questions that may arise tonight.
I've got questions. Thank you. I've got questions from councillor Sakura.
Yeah, thank you very much. I noticed, so there's a basement in one of the houses, both houses?
Yes. Most of the duplex at the front has a basement, and the heritage house will have a basement.
And are they going to be basement suites?
Just under the heritage house.
In both?
No, just the heritage house has a suite. The other duplex has a rec room and a future guest bedroom in the basement.
And I'm just speaking for myself. I think those colours are just terrible.
Well, they don't read very well on the screen. The colours are chosen from a series by Benjamin Moore called Vancouver True Colours, where they went all around the region scraping heritage houses and took them to their lab in Abbotsford and analysed the colours. So when you deal with printers and Photoshop and things, it's always a challenge, but they're, they're very simple, basic colours, like green and buff and that kind of thing.
I'm sure, I'm sure that it's probably all right to a lot of people, but to me, I'm not too impressed with the colour. Thank you very much.
Fair enough.
So it could be only me.
Well, apparently way back then, those colours were popular. You don't remember that, I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay. As I always say, when you discover the original colours, the owner might not have liked them and painted them over the next day. You never know. Councillor Reamer.
Thank you, and thank you very much for meeting with council last week at the site. It's always nice to go see something before things come to us. I have a question in view of the fact we've received an email from a couple of residents. And they're telling us that the trees on the property are sick, that they have the juniper virus. And so you mentioned when we were there last week that there were two pine trees that you were going to be moving from the back of the property, I believe up to the front of the property. And are you aware about the problem with the virus?
Yes, we have a multi-page arborist report, and without, I haven't read it in a little while, but if it existed, I'm sure he would have identified it. And in his comments, he identified the two pine trees that are worthy of being located, and the health of those trees would have been key in that decision.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Hodge.
Yeah, I understand that when you're doing a restoration, it's, doing a restoration is a very complicated process, and it's, it's a lot tougher than just building from the ground up, and certainly this is, you know, 100% better than, than removing the building and starting over. So my question is, when you're doing this type of a construction, what steps are taken to protect the building? Because it's not a traditional build where you put it up and you put a false door in and lock it up. So because of the challenges of doing a heritage restoration, I'm, I'm always worried about squatters or vandals getting in and something happening to the building during the renovation stage. And I'm just wondering, in this type of a build, what steps are taken to protect the home during those stages?
That's a good question about construction process. The building has insurance right from the get-go, and then once construction kicks off, it's fenced like any construction site and security provided. And then we usually see the windows covered with plywood. We usually specify that, so it does damage the windows a little bit, but it's just screw holes that can be repaired. So we cover the windows, and in this case, it's, it's an original front door, so we'll probably remove that front door for restoration, put a construction door on. And then even things like, we have a standard sign that we put on these sites, alerting everybody, including subtrates and labourers, that this is a heritage restoration project and conservation standards are in effect on this site. I then also try and get the crews to get on board with heritage restoration, be sensitive to what they're doing, know what they're working with, and take care and attention. As far as theft of metals and things like that goes, like any construction site, it's just really due diligence and keeping on top of it. And once you put the fence up, get started, like, don't let it sit.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Have no other speakers registered? Are there any other speakers to this item? Please step forward.
My name is Dolores Gale, and I live at 3646 Victoria Drive. I know I'm not anywhere near this place. You people know it as the Ville House, Maison-Ville. My aunt and uncle actually bought the house from the Ville, so I know it as the Gallette House. They bought it in the summer of '47, up until the time he died in '93, so they lived in there for 46 years. I'm really happy to find out that the city and the owner of this house is going into their revitalisation as a heritage home. It's a beautiful home, and I have many happy memories in it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Any other speaker to this item? Nope, seeing none? Nope, okay, well, we'll move on to the next item then.
I just want to say thank you very much to-
Name an address for the record.
Oh, Diane Johnston, 721 Shaw Avenue, Coquitlam. Thank you to council for bringing this heritage home to everyone's attention, and thank you for looking after it in such a wonderful way. I think that the family will do a fine job of caring for it, and I just want to say that many of us are concerned about these heritage homes, so we really appreciate you looking after them, and this is a great start, so thank you.
Any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, any other speakers to this item? Seeing none. I'll declare this item closed.
Item two is a text amendment to the RT3 triplex and quadruplex zone, bylaw number 43472012.
I'm here to present a staff-initiated housekeeping zoning bylaw text amendment pertaining to the parking regulations associated with triplex and quadruplex developments permitted in the RT3 zone. As noted in the staff report, this amendment seeks to correct a staff oversight from a previous bylaw amendment where the regulations for the minimum parking requirements for triplex and quadruplex developments were inadvertently omitted. The proposed parking rate is 1.5 spaces per unit, which is the same rate as previous iterations of the RT3 zone. No other changes to the zone or parking requirements are proposed at this time. Staff are recommending that council grant second, third, and fourth and final readings to zoning bylaw text amendment 43472012. Thank you.
Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? I'll declare this item closed.
Item three is a text amendment to the secondary school parking requirements, bylaw number 43422012.
Good evening, Your Worship and council members. This zoning bylaw text amendment would amend the off-street parking requirements for secondary schools by reducing the current requirement of one space for every four students of school capacity to, to one space for every seven students of school capacity. The proposed rate was found to be well within the current demand observed at various school sites within School District 43. The city's transportation planning staff have reviewed the transportation consultant's report and have recommended the proposed rate of one space for every seven students to meet current and future student enrolment, staff parking needs, as well as the parking needs of non-school-related uses. As a result, staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4342. Thank you.
Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Parking requirements for secondary schools, any speakers to this item, third and last time? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
Item four, text amendment for implementation of the Transit-Oriented Development Strategy, bylaw number 42362012.
This city-initiated zoning bylaw text amendment would amend the RM4, RM5, RM6 High Density Apartment Residential, C4 City Centre Commercial, and C7 Transit Village Commercial Zones in support of the city's Transit-Oriented Development Strategy. A number of amendments are proposed to these zones. The most significant changes include an increase in the permitted base density for the RM4, RM5, and RM6 zones to 2.5 times the lot area; a density bonus structure system similar to the one currently employed for the C4 City Centre Commercial Zones. This would be used for the RM4, RM5, RM6, and C7 zones, so that the financial contribution at each step would be the same as it would be towards amenities identified in the official community plan. A new provision for all high-density zones, including the C4, that would allow the city, at their discretion, to have the amenity provided that is built as part of the development. It would also include an increase in the maximum lot coverage for the RM4 zone to 55% and 90% for the RM5, RM6, and C7 zones to encourage an urban development form. It would also include a provision to allow density to be transferred or shared among contiguous parcels of land in the RM4, RM5, and RM6 zones, similar to what's currently allowed now in the C4 and C7 zone. It would also require a minimum employment generating usage of 0.25 gross floor area times lot area for developments along North Road, Clark Road, the future east-west connector streets between Emerson Street and Clark Road, and Low Heath Highway and North Road, as identified in the city's official community plan, for developments using the C7 zone. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4236. Thank you.
That seems simple enough. I have, I have three speakers to this item, beginning with our own Mr. Housing, Sandy Burpee. Sandy lives at 985 Corona Crescent in Coquitlam.
Sandy Burpee, 985 Corona Crescent in Coquitlam. The text amendment includes a provision for 50% of step three of the RM6 and C7 density bonus to go to the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund. And I recognise that there's a tension between using proceeds of density bonusing for needed community amenities versus growing the fund to provide future incentives for affordable housing construction, and therefore, on behalf of the Tri-Cities Homelessness and Housing Task Group, I wish to express our gratitude to the City of Coquitlam and to council for providing leadership in the Tri-Cities for creation of housing for our most vulnerable citizens. The end result will be a healthier community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Hugh Tate.
Good evening, Your Worship, councillors. My name is Hugh Tate. I'm the president of the Hoy Creek Co-op. We're located 2905 Glen Drive. And I am, as most of you know, we are in the middle of reorganising our land, and we're looking forward to the plans of renovating and redeveloping our site. We are currently proposing the demolition of six of our seven buildings and replacing them with a mix of non-market and market apartment units. We have worked closely with city staff over the past on rezoning, and we're looking forward to working with the mayor and council in the near future. Geoffrey Promelo of Innovative Housing, our development court consultant, will now speak on item four of the public hearing agenda. Thank you.
I have a question.
Is there any question, sir?
Yes.
Sorry, I apologise.
That's all right, sir. No problem.
Councillor Sakura, go ahead.
It's all rental, isn't this complex, right?
I'm sorry?
All rental housing?
Yes.
The way it is now? How many units?
No, no, we, we are planning, in our redevelopment, we are planning to keep one of our buildings and, and redoing that building, tearing down one of our apartment blocks and five townhouse complexes. And, and our share will be shrinking a little bit. I, I think Geoff will have a little bit more detail on some of the-
And they're all townhouses, are they? Or they're all co-ops?
It, it, it's probably at least three-quarters of the land surface is co-op, but all of it will not be co-op, no.
And what's going to happen after redevelopment? How much of it will be co-op, and how much of it will be market housing?
The guy coming up next to-
I don't know the exact proportions of the-
Actually, we're not going to be able to answer those, actually, because of course it's not on tonight's agenda, but it also is, I suspect, part of discussion and negotiation you're currently having with potential proponents for this site, so I would, I would suggest it probably isn't for the public realm yet.
Yeah, I can't, I'm sorry, I don't have the details on, on the exact size, but, but as far as land surface is concerned, the vast, vast majority of the land surface will be nonprofit housing.
Thank you.
Okay. Why don't we have, you had someone else to speak? Come forward, please.
Geoffrey Promelo.
Good evening, Your Worship, Mayor Stewart and council. My name is Geoffrey Promelo. I'm president and senior, senior development manager of Innovative Housing Consultants. Our firm has been contracted by Hoy Creek Housing Co-op to provide a development management for the redevelopment of their nonprofit housing property. The co-op is located, as indicated earlier, at 2905 Glen Drive and 1205 Johnson Street in the Coquitlam City Centre area. I'd like to speak to item four of the text amendment of tonight's public hearing. My client, the co-op, is appreciative of the positive impact proposed city, proposed bylaw amendments will have in enabling the co-op's planned redevelopment, which would include rezoning. The outright positive elements of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment include a proposed amendment that would allow for density to be transferred or shared among contiguous parcels of land, providing for greater flexibility in design and assembly of multi-building and phased development sites; the new maximum lot coverage, and the new building setback. In part 12 of the City Centre Area Plan of the, of the official community plan, there's a clause dealing with the density bonus contributions that says examples of these amenities include, this is what the contributions could help, transit-oriented infrastructure, street enhancements, community facilities such as parks, plazas, public art, and public buildings, and affordable housing. Bullet three of tonight's public hearing agenda item states a revised density bonus structure system for the RM4, RM5, RM6, and C7 zones, will, so that the financial contribution at each step would be the same as the C4 centre commercial zone, city centre commercial zone, and would be made towards amenities as, as identified in the citywide off-official community plan. So I have a question, not to necessarily be answered, but directed to council and staff overall. Is it correct to interpret that affordable housing will also be an amenity that will qualify for city funding from density bonuses, bonus contributions, including ones that would arise from specifically rezoning the co-op site, and secondly, or generally, other density bonus res- site, and secondly, or generally, other density bonus zone sites? So this is a general question. Just want to articulate that there's a critical issue that the co-op about being able to benefit from any density bonus contribution arising from the rezoning of its property. This is because in order to fund the co-op's redevelopment, the co-op will be selling a portion of its land to its private developer. Our calculations show that the co-op attaining an RM5 zoning with an FSR of 3.5 could be in a position of having its developer partner having to contribute $1 million plus to, as an amenity contribution to the city, which the developer will deduct from the purchase price of the portion of the land sold by the co-op. This would have a direct deleterious effect regarding affordability of rents for current and future low and moderate income family and seniors households who have qualified or would qualify for residency in the co-op. Current calculations show that assuming a 5.5% interest rate amortized over 35 years, the loss of $1 million from the sale of the land due to an amenity contribution to the city would result in an average monthly, extra monthly mortgage expense of $35 per month for each of the proposed 156 co-op units throughout that 35-year period.
I'm going to actually direct the question to Mr. McIntyre as our general manager of planning. Mr. McIntyre.
Yes, thanks, your worship. I'll endeavor to answer the speaker's question. Back to the specifics of the project and the various back and forth, I'll probably turn to Raul to speak to that, because Raul and his staff have been working more directly with the development consultant. But the question was, is that density bonus step, it's currently in the C4, but it's proposed to be added to the other zones to basically mirror the C4. And you're correct, sir, it is half of that 0.5, that step from 3.5 to 4, that is actually earmarked for affordable housing. The rest, the other half of that step and all the other steps are towards the community amenities that are identified in the plan. At this point in time, and we're working in council's direction, to do an update to the affordable housing strategy. It's a strategy to promote housing affordability. And through that initiative there, I think council will have some further discussion and consideration about the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund. So I can't fully answer your question, I just explain how it's arrived at that point. Now, if there's any questions around the specifics of your development proposal, I would turn to Raul to respond on that.
Well, we have not made a formal proposal yet to the city, but...
And I have real trouble allowing you to ask questions about the specific of your proposal since it's not on tonight's agenda, but I recognize that the implications of tonight's text amendment on your proposal are what's at concern.
And thank you, worship.
Raul.
I won't talk specifically about the proposal because it is in a very, very preliminary stage. Staff have met with the proponents. Our expectation is that whatever the application is, whatever the zoning proposed comes together, and there's a number of buildings on the property that are proposed, we would review that against the zoning framework and present that to council and determine what kind of amenities are being provided, what kind of density bonus. And at that point, that determination can be made of how the proposal would relate to the zones that we are presenting. The zoning amendments we're presenting are essentially mirroring our C4, which is a very standardized zoning framework, which we think has been very successful and does include, for a number of them that reach the right density gradients, it does include an affordable housing, similar as would be the C4, but it's simply mirroring the C4. Again, our expectation would be that when that proposal is ready to be brought forward, the combination of zoning, total density, total density bonus required, as well as the total package presented by the co-op in terms of type of units and tenure of units, we would present that to council and determine how it is vetted against the zoning framework proposed.
So essentially, what's not clear yet is the idea that perhaps the co-op could be getting money out of their pocket for an amenity contribution to the city as a possibility, and whatever can be done about making it possible to retain more affordability for the co-op, this is essentially what's being requested tonight. And essentially, we know that it's obviously early in the process, but as you pointed out, your worship, tonight was a chance to talk about it.
Sure, and I do appreciate it, because, of course, as you know, we've had a lot of discussions over several years of how to replace the, essentially, the decrepit, some of the really awful buildings, some of the challenging buildings at Hoy Creek Co-op. And you'd have my commitment that there's lots of work still to be done to make sure that every benefit we can give you, every density, you'd have my commitment on that, of course, ultimately, it's a council and it's a community decision at public hearing as to what goes on that property. But I think there's a solution. Well, you know that we're well down a path of examining solutions, and I think we'll get there. And I appreciate you bringing it up, because this is a context that will undoubtedly affect how we come to a conclusion there, too.
Thank you very much.
There's a couple other questions. I see one from Councilor Scora.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So this is a co-op? The whole complex is a co-op? Am I correct?
The portion that will be retained, as Hugh mentioned earlier, two-thirds of the property will be retained. At this point, current plans is two-thirds of the property we retain for the co-op, and another third will be sold as a proper development opportunity to a private developer.
So there'll be an increase in co-op units after redevelopment, or a decrease?
It'll be, right now, the projections are that we'll have the same number. Unfortunately, we can't seem to find our way of viable financial, as far as financial viability is concerned at this point, to increase that.
So how many units is there in that complex now?
157, and there's 156 proposed.
And what, how much is proposed?
156. So just one less.
It's 157.
Approximately, the same, essentially the same number, yeah.
And what, and that 157, they're all co-ops, are they?
Yes, they're all going to be affordable rental units.
So what you can do is replace them, and they'll still be affordable rental?
That's the whole point of the exercise of having a partner where we can sell a parcel of land to make it possible, yes.
Okay, what do you do with the people that are going to be misplaced?
Councilor Scora, their item isn't on tonight's agenda. Tonight's related only to the text amendment, so it's hard to ask questions of them about their application, because they haven't made one yet.
Okay. I don't know why they're here, then.
They're here only because there's some implications of the text amendment upon their property, so it's the, that's the item. If someone, and I see another question related probably to the implications on their property. Counselor Reed.
Thank you, through you to Mr. McIntyre. So let's just look at this piece of property, and if we're going to be applying the new rules which allow for bonus density, correct?
That's correct, Your Worship. What's being proposed for the RM4, RM5, and RM6 would be a density bonusing system. We're not sure just what zone would apply to this property that's being discussed.
And that's part of the problem right now with the discussion of money, because no matter how I look at it, at this point, if we can sell a piece of property you can only build 10 units on, and now all of a sudden you can build 20 units on, there's a lift, and that lift has to come out somewhere. So I personally would think you might be just fine with the way we're going now, but am I reading this wrong?
Your Worship, I think Counselor Reed's on the right track. At this point, first, we know it's a large property. It's bisected by the creek that flows through there, and the basic concept is to sell a portion to generate funds to help them rebuild.
Understood.
And with the zones that are proposed here tonight, the multifamily zones, there is this aspect where you can shift and share the density around, so we're trying to build some flexibility in. So that, again, I think will help the case of the speaker.
Absolutely, and with the lift, it's going to make the property more valuable, so it's, I don't share your concern quite as deeply as you do, right, at this point. But thank you. I get it, yeah.
I think we all understand where you're coming from. In the end, the eligibility for the bonus density program and the ability, as Mr. McIntyre said, to shift densities, particularly on this site, in fact, the shifting of densities is almost made for this, for the site you're talking about, where you're contemplating some relatively low density and hoping to put the real density on the site that you can market. And the ability to apply bonus densities to that will actually raise the market value rather than lower it.
Oh, it will, for sure.
In my estimation, but yeah. And I know you're hoping for every little bit, and I...
I'm just trying to get all the breaks I can.
Got it, that's your job. Appreciate it very much. Okay. Thank you.
You.
Appreciate it. Okay. Okay, that was two and three. And so are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? This is back on the Transit Oriented Development Strategy, not the Hoy Creek Co-op. Are there any other speakers on the Transit Oriented Development Strategy item? Seeing none, I declare this item closed.
Item five is a rezoning application for 3349 David Avenue, bylaw number 4337, 2012.
Your worship? I'm going to excuse myself.
One moment, please, we'll have Counselor Hodge.
Yes, because of the proximity of this property to my residence, I'm going to excuse myself, so there's no potential for conflict here.
I don't think your arm is good enough. That's not a stone's throw.
The subject's site is located on the northeast corner of David and Gilbrook Street. The site is designated Large Village Single Family. Zoning on the site is currently RS2, One Family Suburban Residential. Zoning to the east, south, and portions to the north is RS8, Large Village Single Family, and zoning to the west and north is RS10, Executive Single Family Residential. The site currently has a single-family dwelling. The applicant seeks to rezone the site to RS8, Large Village Single Family Residential to facilitate subdivision into nine residential lots. Staff are recommending second and third readings to bylaw number 4337.
Counselor Reamer has a question on the subject.
Thank you. There's two real issues here. One is the development, and then one is about the roads around the development. And we have received a number of emails today, and as a result, I actually drove up there this morning. I was on Marguerite Street, and I was able to drive straight down through to Palisade I'm wondering if you could please clarify your plans for the street network in there.
Which one do I press? Does this have a... Okay. Yes, thank you, your worship. There are a number of public submissions around the road network, primarily. I haven't seen any submissions around the actual rezoning application. So we have considered them essentially two separate issues, although they are essentially linked, because the application in front of us, which you see in the orange dot at the bottom, is actually going to be completing the actual missing linkage between Marguerite and Glenbrook, essentially the construction of the last missing piece of Palisade Place. So currently, as you're probably all aware, the Marguerite Street, south of Princeton, you come down, essentially, it terminates at a gate, and you see there in the screen, it says "gate." That gate was placed there at the time when Marguerite was constructed, and essentially because there's only a non-operational half-road, if you will, there isn't enough distance there to actually complete a road. The subdivision on Marguerite, actually, the bottom of Marguerite, which is Palisades Place, currently has access, as you can see on the screen, vehicle right in, right out for Palisade Place, as a notation on the bottom. So essentially, the idea was that until the connection between Glenbrook and Marguerite was completed, Palisade Place, the homes on that subdivision would be accessed, right in, right out, on that, essentially, temporary access. That temporary access with this application is going to be eliminated as the connection between Marguerite and Glenbrook will be completed on the subdivision. Let me see if I can advance this. Okay, now you see better the actual right in, right out, and you can see where the existing gate is shown. Let me see. Okay, this one, did take the opportunity here to take counsel potentially through some, just some visuals on the actual area. So this is actually Glenbrook, as it ties into Coast Meridian. The site is immediately in front of you there, and that's the site that essentially will be connecting right through the top of that property, those big trees are, will be connecting Glenbrook and Marguerite.
That's David there, correct?
I'm sorry, David, yes.
That's not Smarty.
Sorry, David and Glenbrook, my apologies.
Glenbrook and David.
Glenbrook and David.
Glenbrook and David.
Yes.
Coast Meridian run parallel.
That's right. So this is actually the temporary driveway up to Palisades from David. I also took the opportunity to just take, and this is essentially a picture of you're standing facing south on Marguerite, facing the gate, and in the distance, you can see the homes on Palisade Place.
See, I drove through the gate today. The gate was open, and that may be part of what's causing some confusion here.
Yes.
And that is to facilitate the local construction, I would assume, having that gate open?
Correct. That gate, there are some, it's been, they're opening it up, there's some fencing put on the site, there's some temporary openings, and we would have to look at what kind of openings that gate allows during the construction period, although once the connection, the Palisade Place connection between Marguerite and Glenbrook is fully open, there'd be no need to open this up. The idea would be that this gate is actually left as a restriction between these two sides of the built street for the moment, and I'll explain a little bit about that. This just shows you the upper part of Glenbrook where it meets Princeton. As you know, Glenbrook, as you head up and you see, this is facing south on Glenbrook, that is also closed to Princeton, there's some bollards there, although there is a letdown, and this was developed as part of the original plan in the area. I'll go back, I'll show here the short term. Thank you. Go now? Okay, sorry. Okay, so when the official community plan was approved, there is a notation on the plan, and there's a policy that goes along with the plan that notes that to address safety issues, vehicular access to Glenbrook Street will become a right-in, right-out once David is constructed as an arterial roadway and secondary access to Coast Meridian is provided. And that essentially is talking about the connection between Glenbrook and David. At the moment, Glenbrook and David is all movements, as you're probably all aware. The idea was that when David is constructed as an arterial road, and there's a secondary connection, which is what's being provided now at Palisade Place, we would then convert the intersection of David and Glenbrook to a right-in, right-out. That's what the OCP calls for. At that time, the idea was that the gate would also be popped open, because that's what, that actually achieves the secondary connection. However, through the discussion with our engineering department on this application, we have indicated in the report, in the staff report, that the opening up of the gate at the lower end of Marguerite and the conversion of full movement to right-in, right-out at David and Glenbrook should be coordinated, or the ultimate road network in this area should be coordinated separately from this application. The concern being that if you pop open the gate at Marguerite, even if you convert the David at Glenbrook to right-in, right-out, you're going to get through traffic from the upper part of Marguerite down to this area. You're likely also going to affect the David and Glenbrook because of increased volumes of traffic, and then we're going to create a separate problem. In addition to which, Coast Meridian is not constructed to its ultimate standard at this time from David up to Princeton. Therefore, what we have identified as an approach at this time would be that as the subdivision occurs, we will build the roadways, as you see here, so the application will construct Palisade Place. However, the gate will remain, therefore, the residents currently on Palisade Place will now access from David, so rather than the temporary access that you see there, they will come in through Glenbrook and David, and that gate will remain. Therefore, there is no real change in the network in this area. However, when the, there's some consultation that will occur likely next year... However, when the, there's some consultation that will occur likely next year and into the future around the ultimate work on Coast Meridian, the functional work on that area. Our staff intend to go out to this community and consult on what the ultimate network in this area likely would be. One of the scenarios that we are looking at would be that ultimately, because of the impact potentially on David and Glenbrook in the ultimate, one of the options would be that you could close David and Glenbrook fully, except to emergency access, and then you would then pop the gate open and connect Glenbrook to Princeton. What that then becomes is essentially a very crescent system, is there simply an emergency access at the bottom, and then all residents on Marguerite and Glenbrook really have their own traffic. There's no through traffic in that area. That's one of the directions we are leaning to, but we do not want to go into opening gates or, you know, changing network volumes on David and Glenbrook at this time with this subdivision. We're not really adding many lots to the traffic with this subdivision, so it's really an independent issue. But the discussion around the ultimate network here and whether we open Glenbrook with the gate being open and closure of David and Glenbrook at the bottom, that will happen as part of the consultation with this area. I apologize for the lengthy explanation. I hope it's hit most of the points raised by the residents in the commentary. I haven't heard any land use issues in that commentary, but I'm happy to answer questions on either of those.
That's very helpful. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Counselor Segura.
Thank you very much. So, Marguerite is a pretty narrow street, is it not?
Yes, Your Worship, a number of those roads, including Marguerite, are under the old, the previous eight-meter pavement standard, so there is some restrictions on parking on those streets.
And you're going to open Marguerite towards Glenbrook?
Sorry? I didn't hear that.
Open up Marguerite to Glenbrook?
At this time, the road connection between Glenbrook and Marguerite, which is called Palisade Place, will be constructed with this application. However, we will not open up Glenbrook to Marguerite. The gate on the bottom part of Marguerite will remain in place.
Okay, and the pylon that's on Princeton, will that ever be removed, or...?
The current pylons at the top end of Princeton, Glenbrook at Princeton...
Yep.
There is an opportunity to look at that connection, but we feel that we would not want to do that until we look at that entire system of Glenbrook and Marguerite and the lower part of Glenbrook at David, and we would deal with all of those at the same time. There is an opportunity, but we'd want to do it collectively with the residents in that area and in consultation with them.
Is there any reason why Glenbrook doesn't go up to Princeton?
Counselor Segura, yes, that's, historically, there were concerns by residents on Glenbrook around the connection to Princeton because of the perception that traffic on the upper part of that community would run straight down Glenbrook to a full movement at Glenbrook and David. And as a result of that, there was a closure up at the top.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor O'Neil.
Yes, and before I go on, I see that we have a speaker on the speakers list here for this issue, and I'd feel more comfortable if the speaker had, and then to speak after.
Yeah, that's fine. We certainly are always open to council members' questions at any time during a public hearing, but...
Yeah, I'll wait till after the speakers. On the speaker list here. Reading correctly, right?
Okay. So we have one speaker on the list, that's Tony Mobilio at 1316 Glenbrook Street.
Good evening. My name is Tony Mobilio, as you said, from 1316 Glenbrook Street. Just, I just came here to get clarification on the gate and the connection between Marguerite and David. When I called City Hall, I was a little bit confused, so obviously, I came and saw that. And so you're going to be closing Marguerite at where Palisades is? Is that the gate? Is that the gate you're talking about, or...? Because I know there's a gate.
The gate will remain in place. What we're saying is we're not touching the gate. The gate is still intending to provide a barrier for traffic so that we don't get traffic running through Marguerite down to Glenbrook.
But Palisades is going to be open?
Palisades will be open to Glenbrook, yes.
So the... It'll be a dead end at the corner?
Existing residents on Palisade Place, you can see, they're the ones on the right-hand side, they will now, instead of going through the temporary access, they will actually come in at Glenbrook now and go east to access their lots.
And the road that was open, sorry, down to Palisades-Marguerite, that'll be blocked off?
That will still be blocked off, yes.
Perfect. All right, that's all, those were my concerns. Thank you very much.
You know, to be clear, this isn't a, you're not talking about a permanent necessarily condition, this is simply that at this point, there is no decision being made related to the opening of the gate. The gate in this application remains closed, notwithstanding, no matter which way counsel goes on this.
Your worship, that is correct. The gate is essentially a temporary restriction. The city does want to look at that gate in the future, and we'll consult with the residents in that area when we make, when we look at the ultimate network in that quadrant, which will include the intersection of David and Glenbrook, Glenbrook at Princeton, and then this gate, this temporary gate. So we'll deal with all those at the same time.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Apparently, Mr. McIntyre would like to speak. Would you like to speak from the podium, or...
Well, maybe I can ask my question now, and I just...
Okay. Counselor O'Neil.
And like other counselors, I received lots of emails about, mainly from people on Marguerite Street worried that there would be through traffic connecting to Palisades Place and onto Glenbrook. And they were all pointing out how narrow and inappropriate that, how narrow Marguerite Street would be and how inappropriate it would be for that sort of traffic. And so I think I heard correctly that Marguerite Street is just eight meters wide. How wide is Glenbrook? It seems, it is wider, and it would be more suitable for that sort of traffic if we were to come to that, but that's, I know that's, those decisions haven't been made, and...
Your worship, yes, I believe Glenbrook is a wider pavement, although not all parts of Glenbrook are fully completed, constructed. Most of it is, but you'll see there's missing pieces along the way. Most of Marguerite, though, I believe, is under the old standard, and there are some restrictions with driveways, fire hydrants, and the narrower pavement. It is a standard that we've moved away from over the last couple of years.
So Glenbrook, if it was built under a new standard for this sort of neighborhood, it would be, what, nine meters wide, or...?
Your worship, the typical standard there for essentially what's considered a through local would be eight-and-a-half meter pavement, which does allow parking on both sides, and... But I don't have the specific dimensions. This looks even wider, so I'd have to check specifically the ultimate-built part of Glenbrook.
Right, it looked about 10% wider to me, so at least. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item on David? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
I'm just going to ask Counselor Hodge to come back to the meeting.
I was going so smoothly without him. Your worship, you won't even notice the traffic noise from the heliport we're putting next to your house. Okay, we're finished.
Item six is a rezoning application for 820 Robinson Street, bylaw number 43462012.
The subject site is located on the west side of Robinson Street, north of Como Lake Avenue. The site is designated Neighborhood Attached Residential in the official community plan. Zoning on the site and to the northwest and south is RT1, two-family residential. Zoning to the east is RS1, one-family residential. The site is currently vacant. The applicant seeks to rezone the site to RT3, triplex and quadruplex residential to facilitate development of an attached three-unit residential development, or triplex. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4346.
Counselor Reamer.
Thank you. Do you have an artist rendering of the building that's proposed that you could put up, please? I think because this is one of our newer housing choices, that a lot of people don't realize what some of the newer triplexes and duplexes are starting to look like. They chip easily, yeah. Thank you very much.
It's been a long day of meetings.
So the way this is showing, then, it looks like it's a corner lot. It looks like there's one access on one street and then two accesses on the other. Thank you. And parking is in the back? May I ask?
Yes, Your Worship, absolutely correct. There is a lane, so this site has two roads, Lee and Robinson, and there's a rear lane. All of the parking is off the rear lane, as would be the case if this was a duplex consequently. And yes, the corner unit has access from Robinson, the other two from Lee.
Okay, thank you very much. Can we go back to the picture, then? Thank you. And are...
Okay, and the question was, is there a basement?
Yes, Your Worship, there is a basement. Just get the exact. So there's three units. The units are, let me see, ground floor, second floor. Yeah, so there's a basement, all the three units have a basement, each one. Unit number one has a 900, roughly 900 square foot basement, and number two, 927 square foot basement. And unit number three, the smaller of the units, has a 777 square foot basement.
Okay, thank you, but there are no suites allowed in triplexes, is that correct?
That is correct, Your Worship.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you to the planning department. There's no suites allowed in the basement. How high are the basements?
Your worship, I don't have a specific height, a dimensional height, but they are built as occupiable basements. There's space in the basement...
They meet the building code.
That meet the building code, so...
Yeah, so if the basement was a full size, that sometimes, without us even knowing, it could be suites in there, or rooms, bedrooms, or whatever it is.
Your worship, typically, the, this would be a strata development. There'd be three units that work together in a strata arrangement. They all have to, they own the property essentially in common. Our experience with suites in these type of arrangements are far less than for individual fee simple units because of the fact that you are working with other unit owners.
Well, I have concerns. The fact is that, you know what, there could be, you know, around that area, there's a lot of people left that go to Simon Fraser University, and who knows what can happen in the basement? You know, could be rooms put in, and many, many other things. So, you know, if it was a, you know, we had maybe a basement, what's the reason for that full-size basement outside of having maybe crawl space?
Your worship, we are finding with these projects, because of the price of land, many units are essentially family accommodation. That is essentially somewhat of a common theme, although like you saw with the first project on Carchee, that one had a range of housing sizes. I think it ranged from 1,500 to close to 2,000. A number of those units also had basements. We are seeing a variety, but in some cases, the price of land and the incentive to redevelop these properties does mean that the units have to be sizable. It essentially can become family accommodation. There's, we sometimes would look at the access to the unit and how it's provided, the number of parking provided on-site, but we do not have specific controls beyond the zoning requirements which prevent secondary suites in terms of the design of the building.
I understand what you're saying about the price of land. That's exactly why I'm asking, that the fact is that because of price of land, they build a full-size basement, and then up comes suites or rooms rented out in a basement that we may never, ever know. On a suite, we probably would, but if the guy wants to put, the person wants to put in, you know, rooms in there, just to have students to stay there, I don't think there's any way we could tell. And that's my concern. So it doesn't become four plaques or five plaques, it becomes about eight or nine plaques. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and last time, are there any speakers to this item? I'm actually going to take a short break. I just want to, there's one element that Counselor Segura just raised, I just want to look at one of them. Sorry, I'm just going to be a second. It looks like I can't read it either. The numbers are too, the numbers are too small. We're going to have to find another solution. When we take blueprints down to eight-and-a-half, eleven, I just, I thought I'd be able to see the numbers. Okay? Any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
Item seven is a text amendment to the RT1, two-family residential and RT3, triplex and quadruplex residential zones, bylaw number 43362012.
This city-initiated zoning bylaw text amendment would amend both the RT1, two-family residential zone and the RT3, triplex and quadruplex zone to do the following. Prohibit two-family residential and 10-meter-wide lot, lots for single-family dwellings, accessory carriage houses, garden cottages within the area designated or proposed to be designated as schedule end of the zoning bylaw, which you see before you. Allow only RT3, triplex and quadruplex developments through rezoning within the area to be designated schedule end of the zoning bylaw, with the choice of either front access or lane access for these developments. These amendments are being initiated by city staff to address the one-way lane access constraint into the area within the proposed schedule end that is directly from an arterial road, that being Blue Mountain Street, where there are limited sightlines and visibility. Staff are recommending these measures as an interim approach until such time that future north-south laned street connections can be provided through redevelopment under the RT3 zoning. Once lane connections are established, staff will bring forward proposed bylaw amendments to remove the restrictions for the RT1 uses and which require access from a lane. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4336. Thank you.
Aren't we missing an item?
No, I don't think so.
I thought we were dealing with item seven, Your Worship, right here.
This is item seven.
Yeah, we should be dealing with item seven.
Now, this is the text amendment, and this is the entire area affected?
It's a text amendment that applies to a larger area.
This actually was an issue in the public hearing ad because it had to be shrunk down so big, so much, that it became hard to read.
Okay? Comfortable with that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, please shout out if at any point it doesn't make sense. Okay. So we're complete there? Are there any speakers to this item? To be clear, this is the item seven, which is a text amendment related to the area shown in gray. Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Please come forward.
Your Worship, my name is Emily Zhao. I just have a question regarding the RT1, RT3 zoning. So this is, according to the OCP, attached to neighborhood homes, which allow for RT1 zoning, but then the amendment says only allow for, consider RT3 because of the back lane access from the east part is blocked by the creek. So what's the impact for the RT3 zoning, which is for two plagues or four plagues in this area, which was not affected, but RT1 zoning is affected? I mean, it's allow for two homes, allow for three homes or four homes, but the back lane access is the issue only for two homes? I just have a question for that.
That shows that you've read it much more than most people. Mr. Alway.
Yes, Your Worship, the speaker is correct. The concern in this area, in the area that's shaded and dark, is that if you apply all of the different housing opportunities under the housing choices, which include, and I'll go through what they are, some of those will impact the road network in this area in a rather negative way, and as a result, these zoning amendments are intended to essentially temporarily restrict this area to certain housing choices that can utilize front access. Specifically, the issue is the single-family subdivision or the two-unit subdivision or two-unit, you can have two separate units, but primarily what we're seeing in the RT1 is a narrow lot subdivision, 10-meter-wide lots. Those lots cannot take access to the front. That's essentially one of the principles of our zoning, because otherwise the whole garage would be the whole frontage of the lot, and it would obliterate any opportunities for on-street parking, and it would destroy our streetscape. Therefore, the RT1 single-family 10-meter-wide subdivision, which falls under housing choices, has a fundamental restriction that parking has to be off the lane, and there are many reasons for that. And we are seeing a number of them come forward to council over the past few months, and I think we've got half a dozen single-family subdivisions with rear lane access. They look very good. What we want to essentially avoid in this quadrant are those type of projects because those lanes do have a dead-end system at the east end, as the speaker has noted. Therefore, what we're recommending in the interim, in this area that's shaded, we could consider RT3 proposals, which essentially are duplex, triplex, which would require some land assembly, and through that land assembly, we would pursue opportunities to actually achieve a lane connection. Once a lane connection to either Danzy or Midor or Rochester, whatever the case may be, is achieved, then we would lift the restrictions on single-family narrow subdivision. But for the interim, because of the, essentially as described in the report, the restrictions on the lanes towards the east, they're a dead end at Le Bleu, what occurs then is that all traffic generated from these developments on the lane would come out directly to Blue Mountain, and, you know, Blue Mountain is, the sightlines are not great. It's a steep, it's got curvature. Our feeling is that it would not be optimal. In fact, our transportation planning department, division has noted concerns. Therefore, these interim restrictions are intended to address those possibilities, and as noted in the report, what we would do is work with any proponent in this area to try to assemble some property, pursue an RT3 development that would allow us to achieve a lane connection, and once we do that, we can then lift the restrictions.
Your Worship, I have another question. It's that most of the lot in this area is 66 by 120, so basically, one homeowner in this area, if it's RT1 zoning, they are capable to subdivide it or they allow for division. But according to RT3 zonings, most of the lots, they have to be combined two or three lots to do that development, and the two plagues or co-plagues in this area, which means it's townhomes in this Austin Heights area. Another question is that in order to solve the problem for the back lane access, actually, I'm not quite sure whether the city can put amendment for only front access for this RT1 zoning, because that's the only concern about the back lane access. But if you put a text amendment for only the front access, because most of the house in this area, they don't use the back lane access, they use the front. So that will solve the problem, but just simply say RT1 zoning is no. I'm just thinking that's an option for the possibility for this area's rezoning application, because there will affect a lot of homeowners in this area. Thank you.
Counselor Reed has asked for a comment from staff.
Yes, so the city has a lot of land that's designated Neighborhood Attached Residential. This is a small pocket. It has unique constraints. We are looking to continue development in this area. There would have to be some land assembly in the interim to achieve the priority of connecting the lane system. In our opinion, this pocket is only one area within the city, and I think we're responding to unique constraints and challenges, and certainly in the opinion of our staff. The RT1 subdivision, the narrow lot subdivision, is a very important component of the Neighborhood Attached Residential. However, having front access to those lots would destroy that particular housing type, and it's not an option as far as staff is concerned. Therefore, we are, our recommendation is that that simply be essentially held in abeyance in this area until we can get a proposal that achieves some connection to each one of those lane systems.
Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
Item eight is a rezoning application for 955 Midor Avenue, bylaw number 4267-2011.
This subject site is located on the north side of Midor, east of Blue Mountain Street. The site is designated Neighborhood Attached Residential. Zoning on the site to the northwest, south, and east is RS11 family residential. The site currently has a single-family dwelling. The applicant seeks to rezone the site to RT1 to facilitate subdivision into two lots for a single-family dwelling. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4267.
Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Declare this item closed.
That concludes the items on the public hearing agenda.
As a result of that, that will conclude the public hearing, and a few minutes, it'll take staff a few minutes to switch things over, and we'll convene a council meeting to consider these items, at least some of them, and as well as a few items on the public council agenda.